I will call the commission meeting to order. Madam Secretary, please call the row.
Western Commissioner Johnny Williams.
Present.
Eastern Commissioner Bradley Jackson.
Present.
Presenting Commissioner Lynn Morris.
Present. If you all will stand and join me with the pledge. It's this way. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. Welcome to our commission meeting today, May 15. We have special guests here today, the state champion wrestling team, girls from Nixa, Missouri. And so we appreciate you all. We've got a special presentation for you today. We'll need to approve the consent agenda. We'll need to approve today's meeting minutes, our last meeting minutes. We have several. We have no financials to approve today, but we have several minutes that we will need to approve. We will approve them before we go into closed session after this meeting. We have March the 26th, regular session. March 26th, closed session. We have April the 3rd, regular session. We have April the 16th, regular session. We have April 16th, closed session. We have April 24th, regular session. We have May the 1st, regular session. May the 5th, regular session. May the 5th, closed session. All of those closed sessions have RSMOs that state the reason why they were closed sessions. And we will follow the agenda exactly, the format that we have, from the beginning to the end. And I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
I'd make that motion. I'll second it.
Appreciate it. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it passes. So the first line of business today is probably the most fun, is to recognize state champions and the Nixa Eagles. And this is actually going to be probably Nixa Day, not only for the wrestling champions, but we've got several things involved in Nixa today. And so the Western Commissioner, Mr. Williams, Commissioner Williams is going to be busy doing some things. But the first thing we'll do is turn that over to Commissioner Williams, and we're going to recognize the state champions.
Absolutely. And congratulations to all of you. I know the best part of this is getting out of school for a little while today. I know that part of the team's not here because they're seniors and you've got the senior stuff going on. So it was really cool getting to dive into that. So I know you had 14 members on the state team. One of the coolest parts is that half of the team was academic all-state as well, which is really, really cool. I know that the team, it's really fun getting to watch and follow the team throughout the Facebook site, throughout the season, getting to see the results. I love that they have that, that the school does that. And to get to see the accomplishments, because what people don't realize when you're actually just watching the sheets and things and you get to see the results, they don't get to see the results that you girls put in every day, how much work it takes for you to be a state champion. And so no matter what happens for the rest of your life, you get to look back and go, hey, we were state champions, which is really cool. So Coach better have a plaque or something up, a picture of you guys in the wrestling room, so that 20 years from now, when the next wrestlers come in, they get to see that. You know, Commissioner Jackson and I, we love to give each other a hard time because he's from Ozark and I'm from Nixa, and we're constantly going back and forth. So I did a little research in your season this year. Looks like on January 14th, you guys traveled out to Ozark. Coach had that workout for you guys?
For you being from Nixa.
Yeah. Looks like here it was 54 to 24. Does that sound about right?
That's what I responded a few times.
All joking aside, all the commissioners here, we absolutely love supporting all the teams. I'm here for the county. So let's see, you know, you guys had had second place three years ago. Last year, an absolute nail-biter with Francis House Central, by taking second place by half a point. I know that had to have stung a little bit. To see you guys come back and to be able to win state by 51 and a half points this year, and not only that, but setting a state record for scoring the most points at a state competition of 139 and a half, where the old record was 134 and a half, another absolutely awesome achievement. So we're super glad to be able to celebrate you guys today. So I'm going to call the names, and as I call the names, I'll have you guys come up and line up here in the front, and then I'll read the proclamation for you guys. So we'll start that. Hannah Egley, Ashton Mays, Miley Harper, Danny Hartley, Abigail Wenzel, Addison Harkins, Abigail Counts, Braylee James, Ava Frye, Cameron Bourbon, Natalie Edmondson? Did I say that right? Callie DePree, Jesse Nelson, Larissa Downs, then head coach Dustin Martin, assistant coaches Josh Downing, Ben Melton, and Kevin Carey. So I'm going to read the proclamation for you guys, and then I'll hand this out, and we'll get a few pictures before you guys go. So the Christian County Commission proclamation, whereas the Nixa Eagles Women's Wrestling Team has demonstrated extraordinary skill, determination, sportsmanship throughout the 2024-25 season. The team finished their remarkable season with a state record of 139 and a half points, earning their rightful place as the 2025 Class II Missouri State Women's Wrestling Champions. The wrestlers, coaches, staff, and Nixa Eagles have displayed incredible teamwork dedication, preservations in every match, overcoming challenges and adversities along the way. The hard work and unwavering spirit of the team has not only made their school community proud, but also inspired countless fans, young athletes, supporters throughout the state of Missouri. This achievement marks a significant moment in Nixa high school history, establishing the Eagles as a dominant force in Missouri school sports. Therefore, the Christian County Commission do proclaim, May 15, 2025, as the Nixa Eagles Women's Wrestling Team Day. So congratulations, guys.
Congratulations. Congratulations. I appreciate you. I think, Coach, I got the others for your seniors and then some of your other staff.
Yeah. Is that what you want to get a photo of this? Yeah. This, if we got somebody to help take pictures.
We're going to have everybody come around behind, and we'll kind of pitch in. That way we can get Commissioner Morrison there as well. So you guys come on around behind there. It's kind of tight.
We'll make sure it gets in the headliner. So we'll try to get that.
We'll take a couple of pictures, and then after that, we at least have to hold up the number one, right? The state champion.
Wait, take my picture.
All right, number one, here we go.
So I want to let, hey, so girls, before you leave, I want you guys to know, just thinking about this, I think it's awesome to have girls wrestling. If I was a boy or a man, I'd be afraid of those.
Is it empty work?
Well, I am. I am. There's no doubt. There's no doubt. I'm not like somebody, but anyway, I think it's awesome. I actually do. So congratulations to you all, all the wrestlers, but congratulations to the coaches, the parents, the grandparents, the school system. Pretty cool.
Thank you.
I think it's a little unfair. When I wrestled, we used to have to cut our hair really short.
Did you?
But let the record show, I was never beat by a Nixa wrestler.
Okay.
Congratulations, guys.
We'll probably fact-check that and make sure that that's correct, but no, that's great.
Nope.
Okay. Okay.
Thanks, sir.
The next thing on the agenda is the Resource Management Director, Mr. Todd. We're going to do a first quarter report, and we appreciate every elected official and all of the department heads to give us these reports. We are live on YouTube. I meant to tell the girls, let's make sure they understand the coaches. Somebody knows that they can make copies of that YouTube and have that to keep forever.
I'll email them and let them know.
I think that's really important, and thank you to IT for always being here and having our meetings live. And we understand, a lot of people can't watch a meeting live because they're at work or have other conflicts, but they also can watch it 24 hours a day. So I think that's really important, that we've made that transparency piece. But, okay, Mr. Todd.
Okay. Well, the first quarter of 2025 has been a steady and stable start to the year for the three departments under the Resource Management umbrella. Our staffing has been stable so far this year, which has been great. Just on top of things, our operational expenditures for all our departments are on pace to allow for our normal operations throughout the year. And our revenues also appear to be on pace to meet the totals that we projected for the year as well. Last year, we four award grant funding, and we purchased two Ford F-150 Lightnings, electric trucks. And the software package that comes with them allows us to track a few things, generally their estimates. But during the first quarter, they were driven a total of just over 6,000 miles. We estimate that we saved about 320 gallons of gasoline by substituting electric. There's an estimate for the CO2 emissions that were avoided, and after we account for the cost of electric, we believe we saved about $615 in fuel costs. So that's interesting to keep track of, but I'm not sure whether that's a real win or not. Thankfully, we had a grant that paid for the vast majority of the purchase price, which makes it a good deal for us. As far as planning and development goes, we've been reviewing multiple aspects of the zoning regulations for areas where an amendment or change might be warranted. I've got in my report here that we plan to meet with the planning staffs of Nixa and Ozark to discuss our urban service area regulation. Actually, had an opportunity to speak with Randall over at the City of Ozark. Thankfully, I've got Scott here, so I can send an email, and we'll get together and talk about it as well. And just to look at, you know, how that's worked over the last 17 years since we began that, and to look at what the real goals are for that regulation, and if there's some changes that might be warranted. As far as land use change goes, we've had a fair amount of requests for land use change in 2025. Let's see, we have a typo on there. But we've had three rezoning requests drawn through the process for a total of 11.3 acres in residential development. The climate for development still seems slightly depressed over past years, but we still create, you know, a large number of developable lots. Over the first quarter, we processed 18 administrative minor sub-applications and replats. That created 25 new parcels. We also have two named subdivisions in the works that would add another 18 residential lots to the area. And as always, we get inquiries and sketch submittals for projects in the county. We're working with multiple developers on other projects right now. I've got some information built in there relative to population growth in our area. Just it shows that we continue to have a desirable area for people to come to. Our population continues to grow in a strong way. As far as commercial development goes, you know, we continue to work with developers on various projects. As always, you know, we are limited in the sites that we have by the availability of public services, sewer and water. But despite that, we still, you know, have various projects going on. I've got some examples here of DOG. They have fire, I think it was last year. They're working on rebuilding one of their buildings and adding another, so that's a significant project. There's a new warehouse building going out on Highway 60, signal gas station out on Highway 14 east of town. And then work continues. There's a small winery facility near buildings being developed, remodeling at Hooked End Bob Krapp's Church, and continuing to work on the county employee health clinic. As far as building inspections goes, the final construction, you know, remains fairly strong. We witnessed a decline in permit issued, permits issued over the last two years, but it's very mild. This year, we're starting off kind of at a similar pace to last year, although looking at what transpired in April, we're on the upswing actually right now. We've got some charts in there that kind of give some comparisons. Probably going to have to reduce the amount of years covered there because it's just immense, but there's a lot of information right there. In the recycling center, you don't hear from them or see them much, but Lee and Bobby, they show up every day, they figure out a way to get things done, and help a lot of people by collecting recyclable materials. Got some information on the collection that we've done. First quarter was really strong. I believe it was the most cardboard we've ever taken in a quarter, so that continues to grow. Mentioned that paper continues to go down, 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 and down, although when I was walking in today, I think our paper might be going up because Lee was loading all these unused ballots from the last election into a property recycle, which was disappointing.
We had 8% turnout for voting.
We did have to install a gas heating unit in the barn out there. They've used for years and years and years, this old oil burning furnace, and Lee has repaired it a million times, and it's to the point where it just really doesn't work very well. So we'll be getting rid of that, but the new furnace will take over if and when we get the Richard's maintenance building built at the property. Environmental world, staff has attended multiple MS4 workshop presentations. We have been asked to participate with the Ozark Environmental Collaborative, which is based out of Springfield, and just looking at environmental issues that the community faces, looking for solutions and things like that. Josh Byrd will be representing the county as volunteer at the annual James River Basin Watershed Education Event for fifth graders. They take a field trip, and that's coming up really soon over at the OC. Out at our facility at 1106 West Jackson, we continue to host public meetings for a variety of purposes. The two political parties, the Clerk's Office has their election judge training there, Pet Town Hall meeting, CERT uses it for trainings and other events like that. So it's having that, at least a large room that we can use, is a valuable resource. And just being over at the new building we're constructing, I think it's going to be a much better place when we get that completed. Oh, and we will be hosting biometric wellness screenings next week if anybody here wanted to sign up that hasn't already. Amber will thank you. And just some notes on what's going on over at the campus development project. A lot got done in the first quarter. The storm sewer was all installed, curb and gutter, as we reported on both sides of the road. The sidewalks are there now. The terrace sidewall and stairs in the AMPA Theater Detention Basin is completed. Topsoil has now been spread over the entire area. I expect the hydro seeding to take place, maybe not tomorrow, but hopefully in the next week. They widened the entrance from 14 onto the road that passes through to development. We can look for finishing touches on the concrete flatwork to come soon. The base rock for the trail component has been laid out, it's compacted, and actually the rubber servicing should go on tomorrow, weather permitting. And one of the next major things would be to finish the road passing through, and this will be in a good spot then. As far as our building, the little building goes, the finishes on the exterior walls are being completed. I think we're just about done with all the masonry. The framing for the windows is installed, and the blast went into that yesterday. The framing for the clinic walls is complete. I would expect that the drywall will be just about be completed by the end of the week. We've got ductwork, fire sprinkler lines, water lines, and all that in place. We do still maintain a goal to have that clinic ready for operation by the end of July. Fingers crossed that nothing major gets in the way. We do have some setbacks or concerns on the horizon. We're very concerned that Liberty is not going to have our electric ready in time. Still trying to define that problem and to see if we can make the progress on it. I've got a meeting right after this over at the site to discuss that. As far as our water connection goes, for whatever reason, the City of Ozark did not like that we had the fire suppression system, water, its backflow preventer located inside the building. They're requiring that we locate it outside the building. That's going to be a significant chunk of money. I'll be bringing a change order to you next week to try and accommodate that. We also ran into an issue with utility relocation. The water main and some other utilities that pass down 14 in front of the development, they were originally not installed at really the appropriate depth. And then we add in the fact that the entrance requires that we cut away a little bit of that slope there, reduces that some more. We're going to have to excavate and lower the utilities there. I'm not going to sure how far, but that's going to be a major project.
Just the utilities or the water line as well?
Yeah, the water line is the main thing. So we've got an estimated cost on that. We'll be bringing a change order on that as well. I think that's all I have. Have they answered any questions?
Sure. Thank you. Questions, comments?
On the USA agreement, I know I spoke to you about meeting with Nixa. Scott, are you guys, I know I talked to the city administrator, he said you guys have been working on that, your detail before it gets back to us. Are you guys pretty close on that, on your stuff?
We actually met yesterday internally to discuss it, and it seems like we're all on the same page.
Awesome. And then I just told him to request to just send it to us, so we can go through it, and then that, before we have meetings, I say "we." And so I'm just making sure that all, everything is still in the process there.
Commissioner Jackson, do you have anything?
I don't know. I mean, through the planning and review process for the backflow preventer, was that not caught by the City of Ozark in ample time to?
We at the county are doing our own building inspections and plan review. So, no, as far as the county was concerned, our architect that actually does the review, it's an acceptable arrangement. This is something with the City of Ozark. I'm just commenting to Miranda when we're here, I, does the city have the authority to command that of us?
What's the purpose, what's the stated purpose for their wanting it outside the building versus inside the building?
I believe they want to make it easier for them to get to, in the case of a fire or something like that. It's one of those deals where this is what the code calls for, as far as they're concerned. And that's what they want us to do, or they won't. I assume their leverage would be that they won't let us hook up to the water.
Okay.
Where if it was anywhere else, at least our building code would not require that.
Okay. And the infrastructure utility relocation, we're not deep enough, why is that? I mean, did our engineers not calculate the appropriate depths, and now we're going back? Does that not fall back on them?
Well, I believe they were not exactly aware of the depth. I think that the requirement to cut the slope off came in late in the game with MoDOT approving our plans. And did that sound, if that makes sense, Miranda?
The way that the engineers explained it to me was, they put it at an acceptable depth based on the existing grade of the campus. And then when the MoDOT connection was approved to 14, they required that it be cut down. So once it was cut down, that reduced the cover over the water. And so I think they've proposed, where it was a straight line crossing the entrance, they've proposed a couple of 45s, I believe, to just dive it down under that entrance and then connect back up into the line. But I don't think, whether that was, I can't say whether the engineers should have talked to MoDOT at the beginning or not. That's probably a good question for them. But at one point, it was okay. MoDOT comments came in, it was no longer okay. That's the way I understand it.
So the MoDOT comments came in after the infrastructure was already put in?
Came after the water and sewer. The water and sewer was the very first bid packet that was put out, and then the site grading and the storm water, I guess, came second. So it was part of a site grading comment, and the water and sewer was already, that contractor was long gone off the site.
Well, that water main passing down 14, that was already there.
Yeah, that was a city water. That was already there.
And that's, we also understand that it's not at the expected depth.
It's not. So the existing water main was also not at the appropriate depth.
Which is the bigger issue.
You know, had it been at its appropriate depth, there may have been some alternative that we could have.
Yeah. The city's not going to require themselves to lower their utility, but they can require us.
Yes.
Well, I appreciate Commissioner Jackson making those comments because I had written the same two things down too. I mean, I'm always concerned, I'm always concerned when we have more expenses overrides than we were projecting. And I'm always wanting to know, just like Greenbridge, we had an issue with design, and that didn't cost taxpayers an extra dollar because the engineering firm's going to take responsibility for a, something that probably would never, ever happen, but we can't take a chance, and so we've had a delay on Greenbridge's completion, and they're going to take the cost. And I'm always wanting to make sure, and I know that's what the other two commissioners are getting at, is to protect our county and protect our citizens, we have to make sure that we're as frugal as we can be, and so I just, I hate to hear all those overruns, but, but, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't like the overruns, and of course, I don't like the fact that we're going to be required to do something and the city's in the same position with depth, and they're not going to require themselves to do something, but they're going to require us to do something. I think we need to have a conversation.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we've said that, and I've said that more than once, and we all agree.
We're all reaching out to the mayor.
And we all agree, we need to probably have a meeting of the minds, because we feel like there's been some things that haven't been quite as, I think, as fair as they should be, and changes that have been made after the fact, and protecting the county is our number one goal. So working with everyone is our number one goal too. So we all need to work together. But I don't think, I want to say one thing too before you, and thank you for your report. I think it's a great report. I just want, because we have a lot of people watching on YouTube, and they'll watch after the fact, and I appreciate the citizens are here. Grants are extremely important. If we didn't have all the grants from all the different departments and elected officials in this county getting grants every month, we would not be able to provide the services that we provide for this county with the money that we collect and the budget that we have. So it's extremely important. Those two, those two Ford F-150s, electric trucks, uh, we didn't, the county did not hardly spend any money on those trucks. They were basically free trucks. And, and honestly, I think we are gonna save money and I think it's just another proof of how important those grants are. I know when we talk about the NIXA right of way with, with Mr. Scott Godfrey here, I know that they've got a grant and that's the reason why they were coming here to the commission, uh, to have us help with MoDOT and the right of way and everything. So, so grants are extremely important and, and I just wanna brag about all of the elected officials and department heads that do a great job getting grants that help our county so much. So, thanks for that. Tell your people, thanks for that. But I appreciate the report. Anything else? Any other comments that we have? Okay. All right. Well, thank, thank, thank you. Okay, the next thing on the, uh, the, uh, agenda is the, uh, city of NIXA right of way. And, uh, I think we have, uh, Scott here. I pre, I appreciate that. What, what we, what we need to do as a, as a commissioner today, I, is, uh, I've got a, a letter from, uh, from Scott Godfrey and, and, um, he's the director of planning and development and at NIXA, and they've got a grant and they, uh, wanna put a, uh, welcome to NIXA sign, nice sign because they got this grant. And I think that's a great thing to do. And, uh, but as a formality, we have to also, we have a form that we're gonna sign. All three of us will sign off on it and date it. And, uh, uh, they're working with MoDOT to, to, to get a right of way, um, actually, what do we wanna call that, Scott? It's, um?
We're looking to annex part of.
Annex.
Right away.
Right. Yeah. And there's no opposition for us. We, we wanna help the municipality of NIXA. And so, um, is there anything else you need to tell the guys that, that, I'm not probably doing a very good job telling them, but I mean, I, I, I've read this, I know they've read it. It, it was sent out on our, uh, our, uh, computer system so, so they know about it. Anything else we need to know?
No, we've been working with MoDOT to try to get a welcome to NIXA sign there. And according to their regulations, it's easier if we have the right of way, their right of way inside of our city limits. So that way we don't have to jump through too many more hoops in order to use or utilize this grant money that we got from the Division of Tourism at the state of Missouri. Um, so I appreciate you guys getting this on your agenda so quickly.
Yeah.
So it's, it's kinda more of a formality just to show that MoDOT that we reached out to all municipalities that are gonna be within a five mile radius and also the, the county that we are located in.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not trying to cause any, any trouble, but I, I, I think this is an example of the county always trying to work with every municipality, uh, whether it be large like Ozark or NIXA, or small like Billings or Clever or anyplace. I mean, the county wants to facilitate and work together. And I'm hoping that rubs off on some of the municipalities that where we get it returned back to, to the county. But certainly you guys, we, uh, we've had a great working relationship with city of NIXA. Any other comments or questions?
What kind of sign are we putting up over here?
It's a, a monument sign that basically says, welcome to NIXA.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's nothing too fancy. We, uh, we could've spent it all on just one sign, but we decided to split it into two locations. So it's gonna be slightly smaller signs, but, uh, one on West Highway fourteen and one on East Highway fourteen.
Okay. No digital billboard or anything?
No, no. It's just a simple monument sign with some backlighting on it.
Okay, perfect. I know that, uh, they, they put a new sign up in Bolivar, welcome to Bolivar, home of Governor Michael Parsons. So are you gonna put, uh, uh, welcome to NIXA, home of Jason Bourne officially on a sign instead of an unofficial sign?
We're still trying to keep that secret over there, aren't we?
We, we, we've discussed the little, the slogan on there, but that, that's not one of them that made the cut.
They didn't make the cut, okay.
Okay. I would take a motion to approve, uh, uh, this agreement with NIXA.
I would make that motion.
Okay, thank you, sir. So, we got a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. If it passes three to zero, if you'll come up, we're gonna give that to you now. That way you can leave. We've got it signed for you. Try to be efficient that way with your time. I appreciate, appreciate everything.
Can I have a copy made before you give me the original?
Oh, okay. Yes, uh, we'll, we're sorry. We, we will, for our records, we have to keep records forever. And so we will, we will send it to you.
I appreciate it.
Okay, yeah. Okay, can you?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Very good. Okay, next item on the agenda is, um...
Marketing proposition.
Christian County marketing, uh, proposition. I'll start that off. And I, I, I've got Stevie here with Show Me Christian County. She's an integral part of Show Me Christian County. And, and she's, uh, been working on projects like this. I just want, today we just wanna bring awareness to the fact that, uh, that we have a, a, a big operation that has, has found Christian County. Uh, and, and it's, um, Dennis Quaid. Some people know Dennis Quaid. I know who he is. Uh, my wife watches some of the shows that Dennis Quaid does. Uh, he does a lot of educational shows on public TV and a lot of the different, uh, uh, networks, uh, all the way from CNN to Fox News, all, uh, uh, over the thing. And they were interested in proposing, they've got a proposal for Christian County that, um, they would do, uh, about a forty-five, fifty-minute production show. Uh, spent about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to produce this show, uh, to highlight Christian County. The people, they have an audience in all fifty states, uh, uh, and a large audience and they, and they also say that, uh, they would do a five-minute and a one-minute. And so there's different segments and pieces that we could actually do to market, uh, Christian County. Uh, at the time I first talked to them, Anthony Davis is their senior producer and talked to Dennis Quaid, uh, the, I thought Christian County was the second fastest growing county in the state. We had been first, uh, the fastest growing county in the state before. When I was on the school board at Ozark several years ago, we were the fastest growing county in the state. And, uh, so according to KY three, we are again now. I'm actually trying to find the source that they were quoted from because I've asked twice now. I got interviewed yesterday by KY three. I've got a call, a reporter today. And again, I've asked him and asking, you put it on the news, uh, last week. I need to know, where's your source? Cause I, we, we need to back up that source. We need to check that source out before we start saying that we're fastest growing county in the state. Um, they say by their marketing program, the, the, the shows they would produce for us, they would, um, it would make us have, be very, uh, known throughout the country with, with businesses that have never heard of us before. Investors and businesses have never heard of us. And, and we would increase our, uh, availability and, and we would have a lot new, a lot of new business. I think we're gonna have that in a way. I think we're in the renaissance of twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. Uh, one of the things that Mr. Todd didn't mention, uh, the commission is, is proud of is this plaza, county plaza on the forty acres that we're building is a, is a long-term project. It's not gonna be done in a year or two. However, however, uh, uh, over time, we plan on moving as many county offices as we can. So our citizens can go to one place and take care of everything they need. The courthouses are not moving. The jail is not moving at this time. They're not gonna move out there. But, but everything else will be out there on that forty acres. And on that forty acres, it's gonna be like a park-like setting. Uh, there's trails for the citizens to come and walk through the trails. There's an amphitheater that we're building and, and just all kinds of things that the citizens in the county will be able to, to do. And we're, I think the most important thing that the commission has done is decide how we're gonna pay for it. We're paying for it as we sell lots. We're paying as we go. So we're not building anything till we have the money. And so we're selling buildings and we're selling lots and then we're moving. We're selling buildings and lots and then we're moving. And I think that's really important. Uh, we're not asking for any tax increase. We're not asking for bonding. We're not gonna borrow any money. It's all gonna be paid for by how we're doing the operation. And now, it's gonna take longer that way, but I think it's a very wise way to build something very, very nice for our people. And, um, so really proud of that. We have sold two lots. There'll be a dental office and a hotel. We, we got a hotel coming in. And now we have interest for a, um, restaurant, a chain, national chain restaurant next door to the hotel. So we have five lots. Uh, we got two sold. We need to sell three more and we're gonna continue to do that. Uh, and, um, so anyway, uh, I, uh, we just need to, today, and there was questions. Stevie had, uh, I had Show Me Christian County, uh, come up with a lot of different questions to where we could learn more about it. Hopefully you got that sent to you. Um, and if you didn't, I, I had Kerry run off more copies today of what he sent me on Monday. We'll have that on, on, on your desk this afternoon. And, um, uh, because they didn't wanna take the time to answer each question, they said it's in the things they sent us. Stevie, did you see that?
I didn't see her.
Okay. Well, I, I had her make you a copy this morning too.
Okay.
So this is nothing that we're gonna make a decision today on, but I wanna bring you up to date, uh, that, uh, it would cost us some money. Uh, so if they're gonna spend a hundred and fifty thousand, they're asking us to spend twenty-eight thousand. And so, uh, that's money. That's a lot of money. And we don't really have that in our budget. I would suggest that as we prepare our twenty-six budget, that we might, uh, uh, look at, uh, adding for the first time a marketing budget. Uh, we'll be working with the auditor, uh, to, uh, have a budget that, uh, increases our marketing. And if we don't spend it, that's great. But if we need it, that's great too. Uh, so I just wanted to bring awareness and I don't know, there's a lot of stuff we sent to you all. I, I, I hope it all got sent to you where, where you can pull it up on your laptops. But, uh, if you have, all have any questions on, on what this proposal is? And they found us, by the way, because of Show Me Christian County, our marketing arm for, for, and development for Christian County, not really so much the chambers anymore, but Show Me Christian County. Um, we did a, they did a, 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 um, piece in National Geographic a month ago?
Uh, it came out in February.
February. So a couple, I'll just try. A few months ago, they, they did a piece in National Geographic, which is a great publication and seen all over the country and around the world. They have international issues and they have United States issues and, and, um, because we advertised and, and bought a package from them, uh, they're, we're getting ready to celebrate the, how many anniversary?
It's the hundredth birthday of Route sixty-six.
Of Route sixty-six. One hundred years.
Excuse me. Also the semi-synchronous in the United States.
Yeah. And what's really interesting is, I wouldn't know this. I hope I tell you something that you don't know either, uh, because I, I would've never dreamed. I grew up knowing where Route sixty-six, we've all been on Route sixty-six. I've never been all the way through Route, Route sixty-six is a long road, okay? It goes a long way through our country. Uh, but interestingly enough, citizens in this country don't understand, especially the younger folks today, they don't understand the significance of Route sixty-six. In Europe and around the world, there are more people that wanna travel to the United States to participate in this one hundred year anniversary than US citizens. Isn't that amazing? That it's in our country and we'll have more people celebrating and spending money, eating out, gasoline, hotels, everything they're gonna do through this Route sixty-six. So I think that's kind of a really neat deal. And, uh, but I just know that, uh, this county is gonna explode with developments and, and, uh, so marketing is something that we need to continue to support Show Me Christian County. But we also need to maybe have a little bit of money ourselves. So if the commission would decide and we get an opportunity, uh, that would really be good for our citizens in our county, then we might wanna do that. So if there's no other questions, we'll, we're gonna move on. Okay?
Yep.
All right. Thank you very much. That's just, I think, good information. Thanks, Stevie, for, for being here today. Um, okay, the next item on the agenda is notice of filing a petition to vacate a portion of Holder Road. We're gonna have Commissioner Williams read that and then we'll make sure that people understand why we did that today.
Okay. The notice of filing a petition to vacate a portion of Holder Road and setting a time and place for public hearing. Whereas notice is hereby given that the Christian County Commission received a petition for the vacation of the following right of way of Holder Road, which is a county road within the domain of Christian County, Missouri, starting at the centerline intersection of Kerr Road and Holder Road and the following, the centerline of Holder Road north from the intersection and distance of one thousand eighty feet to a point of beginning for the portion of Holder Road to be vacated, beginning at the point and following the centerline of Holder Road north, two thousand one hundred and seven feet to, to an end. The petition to vacate includes the two thousand one hundred and seven feet of Holder Road within an apparent forty feet right of way, lying within section twelve, township twenty-seven north, range twenty-three west. This is a general description of the area to be vacated and not an official legal description. Whereas the county commission did set a date for public hearing on the matter and directed the court clerk to prepare notice therefore for posting the publication pursuant to section two-two-eight point one-one-zero-point-two RSMO. And now therefore be it resolved that public, that said public hearing of the petition to vacate the segment of Holder Road described above has been set for July tenth, two thousand twenty-five at nine AM at the administrative building of Christian County Commission, one hundred West Church Street, second floor courtroom, Ozark, Missouri, six-five-seven-two-one, to hear testimony and evidence regarding whether a portion of said county road should be vacated pursuant to section two-two-eight point one-one-zero RSMO. Interested persons are invited to attend this public hearing and will be given an opportunity to express their views, concerns, the petition to vacate the segment of Holder Road described above. This notice is being given in conformity with section two-two-eight point one-one-zero RSMO, written remonstrance concerning the foregoing may be submitted to the county commission at the hearing or by mailing it to the commission so that they are received prior to the hearing.
Okay, very good. Any comments or questions on that reading? Main thing I would just wanna point out is what, what we intended to state was to make sure that people knew when it was gonna be, what time it was gonna be, wherever it's gonna be. It's gonna be in here. Uh, it'll look a little different when you get here on July tenth. We will have extra chairs brought in here. When, when, we've had meetings up to a hundred and fifteen, hundred and twenty people in here. And that's about all we're gonna be able to accommodate. So I would suggest that, uh, some people can watch it live on YouTube or watch it after the fact. Uh, and, uh, but we wanted to make sure we, we state where it's at and what time and things like this. And we're getting our guidance from our county, uh, county attorney. Um, okay. So, uh, nothing else and we'll go to the next item on the agenda and, um, that is the reading. And we did add this to the agenda and, uh, pleased to do that. Uh, it's not required by the statute. I understand the statute, talking to our county attorney, uh, originated in nineteen thirty-nine. Uh, that's a long time ago and it really hadn't had any updates since that time. Uh, but it's not, a remonstrance is not required by state law to read. However, I think because of the interest that has been shown, all three of us commissioners appreciate all of the emails, all of the phone calls. Uh, we've had a lot of them. And I know my folder is pretty, pretty big now. I'm collecting and saving everything that's, everything that anybody sends me and I'm sure the other commissioners have too. Uh, I'm very confident that, uh, we'll continue to study and, and make the best decision for the county. But, but, uh, we, we, uh, we'll read the remonstrance now. Again, Commissioner Williams will do that, uh, um... Again, Commissioner Williams will do that, uh, because that's his side of the county, so.
The remonstrance against the vacation of the portion of Holder Road. Come now, the undersigned remonstrance by council and pursuant to two-two-eight point one-one-zero of the revised Missouri statutes respectfully submitted this remonstrance against the proposed vacation of a portion of Holder Road. The undersigned assert that the proposed vacation is not in the public interest and would result in significant deter, detriment to the community and the state of the following in support of the petition pursuant to two-two-eight point one-one-zero of the revised Missouri statutes. A county road may be vacated only if it's determined that doing so is in the public interest and does not adversely affect the convenience of the public or the property rights of individuals. Public interest. The proposed vacation of the portion of Holder Road is not in public interest. The road serves as a vital thoroughfare for residents, providing essential access to schools, businesses, and emergency services. Its closure would significantly inconvenience the community and disrupt daily activities. On information and belief, Holder Road includes a portion at issue with established in eighteen seventy, was recognized as a county road in eighteen seventy-five and has been in continuous use of a county road since that time. On information and belief, an average of fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred vehicles travel Holder Road each day, including the portion at issue. On information and belief, closing the portion of Holder Road at issue would severely impact the ability of emergency vehicles to access residents and businesses on either side of the portion proposed to be vacated. The emergency services has expressed their opposition to vacating any portion of Holder Road. On information and belief, school buses serving the Clever, this, school district use Holder Road, including the portion at issue, every day during the school year. And closing that portion would not only be an inconvenience, but would also likely add to the school district's costs and present challenges for ensuring student arrival and, and return times. On information and belief, in two thousand twenty-three, the petition, the petitioners were presented with a proposal to widen Holder Road and install a walkway and they rejected the, that proposal. Adverse impact of property rights. The vacation of the road at issue would adversely affect the property rights of the undersigned and other residents in the area. The road provides the most efficient access to certain properties and its closure would diminish property values and limit future development opportunities. Lack of alternative routes. There are no viable alternative routes that could accommodate the traffic currently using Holder Road. The proposed vac, vacation would lead to an increased congestion in surrounding roads, posing safety risks and increased travel times. Closing the portion of Holder Road at issue would severely impact the ease and timeliness of travel in general, but in particular, it would markedly increase the travel time between Nixa and Republic. Community opposition. There is substantial opposition for the, from the community in regarding the proposed vacation. Numerous residents have expressed concerns about the negative impact of their quality of life and the potential economic consequences. As just one example, after some of the undersigned created private Facebook page called Say No To Holder Road Closure on March twentieth of two thousand twenty-five, more than fourteen hundred Facebook users have joined the group. For the reasons stated above and the undersigned respectfully request that the commission deny their proposal vacation of a proportion of Holder Road and therefore, and their own behalf and on behalf of others who oppose this proposal, they request the opportunity to testify before the commission to express the reasons for this opposition. Wherefore, the undersigned pray that the honorable county commission deny the proposed vacation of the proportion of Holder Road, providing an opportunity for the undersigned and others to oppose this proposed, proposal to testify before the commission on the matter. Grant such other and further relief of the commission deems just and proper. We, the undersigned residents of Christian County, being duly qualified and incompetent residents of Lincoln County Township respectfully represent and avier that the portion of Holder Road at the issue of the petition vacation, a portion of Holder Road is a vital and useful public roadway and that vacating the same would be in the public and, would not be in the public interest and would result in significant detriment to the community.
All right, very good. Any comments or questions, uh, concerning the reading of the, of that, of the remonstrance, okay? The only thing I would want to say, you, you know, Holder Road is a beautiful road. Uh, I spent two and a half hours last Saturday with my wife, Janet, uh, wanted to know, uh, I've never been to Holder Road and I said, let me take you over there Saturday evening before it got dark. It was beautiful in the evening, about five-thirty, six o'clock, and we stayed over there until dark. And I stayed at all parts of Holder Road and watching traffic and looking at homes and looking at the beautiful land and, and things like that. And, uh, y'all have a great place and we're, and, but at the end, when this commission makes their ruling on, uh, July thirty-first, the last, uh, Thursday of July, uh, we all have still got to come together and, and know that we're all citizens of Christian County and we're going to do our best to make the wisest, the wisest decision. But, um, anyway, I appreciate that. That shows the importance of the remonstrance and we didn't want to, to downplay, downplay that. So I'm glad that, I'm glad the commissioners wanted to do that, so I appreciate that. Okay, the next item on the agenda, uh, is communications from the commission. And, uh, do you gentlemen have anything that you want to, to allow people to know? I've got just two or three and then we'll...
I have one.
Okay, yes.
I'm currently working on putting together, uh, and I've been spending a significant amount of time on putting together the boards that we have and place people on. I'm working on that to have a transparent page hopefully in the future to be able to get that on the page where people can see it, see the positions when they're open, so we can have the flexibility and for people to see, have it very transparent where people can go on there and apply for different boards. Uh, it's going to take me some time as diving into this. I've realized it's, it's, it's not as easy as just finding a list and going, there it is. So I'm working on that, hoping to have that, um, in the next few months and be able to have that together so that we can, uh, we can work on that.
Very good. And Commissioner Jackson, we do have a board position open for the library, uh, Board of Trustees for the eastern side, Sparta. Uh, do you have any information?
Yes, the website has been updated with the, the dates and times. Applications are being accepted at this point in time. Uh, let me see here, I'm trying to remember the, the time. So, uh, all, all applications for the two thousand twenty-five appointment would need to be received here in the building no later than four thirty PM. That's close of business on June second of two thousand twenty-five. Commissioners will meet with each qualifying candidate, so we'll set up appointments with them uh, the week of June ninth through the thirteenth, uh, two thousand twenty-five. And we will vote, uh, for our candidate of choice on the nineteenth of June, two thousand twenty-five during our regularly scheduled meeting. That'd give them plenty of time to be onboarded and prepared for their July, uh, Board of Trustees meeting.
Okay, perfect. And then, uh, we're anticipating that we will individually interview, uh, all the applicants like we have.
Yes.
So we individually, not as a group, unfortunately for the applicants, they're going to have to be interviewed three times. But I think it's really important for each, uh, commissioner to see that person and spend that time with that person by themselves and, and do the interview. And then we'll get back and, 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 and make a decision, vote and make a decision. So, so that's an important announcement. It's, it's on our website, county website. Uh, and, uh, so that's important. And, uh, another couple of things that I, I want to make sure that commissioners know that. Did you, did you guys get the, uh, letter from Southwest Missouri Council of Governments concerning a, a meeting on June the fifteenth? It's that resource management here in Ozark. And, uh, I know Miranda Beatles, our, uh, road administrator, uh, will be there. Uh, but we all are invited. I plan on being there. It, it's, it's an annual meeting and it is a transportation meeting. Smog is between OTO, Ozark Transportation Organization, which Commissioner Jackson and I will be at that meeting today at eleven-thirty. Uh, we, this, this Southwest Missouri Council of Governments really helps control who gets roads, road projects, works with MoDOT, everybody. And, uh, so we probably should be there at one-thirty. We'll make sure that y'all have that information. It's June fifteenth and it'll be a very important meeting. There'll be quite a few people there that have to do, is that correct? That, uh, pretty good meeting?
Yeah, it's, um, the county and then the municipalities inside the county usually have a representative.
Yeah, so we're all working together, all the municipalities, uh, they should be there if they're interested in...
On what day?
June fifteenth.
June fifteenth is, uh, Sunday, it's Father's Day.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And I'm sorry, absolutely wrong. I'm sorry. May twenty-first, thanks for, thanks for correcting.
I'm just adding it's...
No, 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 thanks for correcting. May twenty-first, May twenty-first, okay? That's next week. And, and the reason why June fifteenth came to my mind just then is I, I want to make sure people know June fifteenth is the deadline for, for signing up for the senior tax, uh, credit. Um, so that's exactly thirty days away. We've had a lot of people sign up, seniors sign up. We want as many seniors as eligible to sign up and we're working extremely hard to get everybody, uh, approved. And, uh, we sent out letters yesterday. So if anyone's already sent their application and want to know if they've been approved, we sent out several thousand letters yesterday. That's a lot of postings. Uh, they've all went out yesterday. The ones that have been approved by now. We've still got more that will be approved, but, uh, I just think that's, that's an important thing. The last thing I want to know is I did, I'll let you all know, I just think this is pretty interesting. I spoke at the Rotary Club yesterday and, uh, this is a, a number that Danny Grady, the assessor, shared. He shared some numbers I shared with him. I'm just going to share one number. Today, Christian County is over one point six billion dollars in property assessment. One point six billion dollars. When I moved to Christian County in nineteen seventy-seven and my wife's been here her whole life, went through the school system, we were at three thousand people. We actually had four hundred people more than Nixa. Nixa was twenty-six hundred, Ozark was three thousand back in nineteen seventy-seven. Look where we are today and that makes us the fourteenth largest county by assessment value out of a hundred and fourteen counties. And we're continuing to grow. We'll never be at the very top because there's some really big counties. But there are some that we still probably will overcome. And we'll be over a hundred thousand people in the next twelve to eighteen months. So anyway, interesting, interesting numbers. Um, anything else that we need to say before we will go into recess and then, and then start, uh, a, a closed session?
I have nothing.
Okay. We will go into recess and then we will start back with a motion to go into closed session. We'll sign all of the, um, different minutes right now where, where that staff can get started on that, okay?